Hey, I'm Rob Shogr and I'm a little jittery today. I haven't at Starbucks in four months.
And I'm Al Cootree and I'm never getting a haircut again.
And I'm John Timmerman and I have four tattoos that are way too big for anyone's good, except for mine. What's up Buzz Nation? Welcome to I'm a Little Buzzed, the show where we bring a little life to business. We are the founders of the Noble Company. Welcome to our show. Fellas, how are we today?
I'm excellent.
You were gonna say I'm fucking a little buzzed?
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna be like, I'm fucked up.
It's okay.
But I'm not.
I'm a little fucked up. That's the new, the name of today's show.
I'm fucked.
Yeah, hey.
Well, but I'm not, cuz I haven't been drinking, only this.
Maybe you haven't been drinking enough of that. Maybe that's the secret.
And here's the problem. I mixed a bunch of coffees this morning and I got real, I got overzealous with the coffee flavors and I was like, hmm, let's mix them all.
Like flavors, too?
Like flavors. And I was like, oh, French vanilla, hazelnut, blueberry, great. And I thought, let's fill this puppy all the way to the top. And it is dog shit.
Probably tastes about as good as this.
It's terrible. So although Burnberry has incredible coffee, here's what not to do. Don't mix them all.
Yeah, yeah. By the way, you guys do green stuff?
I do, yeah.
I've seen, I could have sworn I've seen, cuz I thought it was, I thought it was a dip bottle at first in your car.
Really?
Yeah. I always got a spitter in the car.
I thought he had a spitter.
Here's a fun fact, um, that people probably don't know is I dipped for 12 years and um,
You miss it, don't you?
I'll catch a lot of judgment from it. It's terrible, but I miss it terribly.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't.
You don't?
No.
Oh my.
So I, yeah, I dipped for probably 10, which by the way, I don't even know if my mom knew this. She said, she was, she was a dental hygienist.
She does now.
So yeah, she does now. Um, but.
Never dipped.
I don't, dude, I don't, I loved it at the time, like the oral fixation, like just that thing, oral fixation, people like that's why people bite their nails.
Yeah, but they say people, oh, oh, just put anything in your mouth, but like that doesn't apply. Like it's not like, oh, put a piece of gum in your mouth, oral fixation. That's not, that's not the same.
Yeah.
It needs to be mint scalded.
Yeah. What, what, what vices, what vices did you have? Did you have any?
I feel like Rob has zero vice.
No. Did you ever do any bad shit? Did you ever smoke cigarettes or no dip?
Smoked cigars today, but I didn't, I didn't start doing that until 10, 15 years ago. But that's like every once in a while, it's not like a uh,
I don't know. I don't feel like cigars are a vice. I don't think a cigar is a vice.
My worst habit.
How's it any different from dipping? Like, well, smoke goes in your mouth, comes out.
More sophisticated.
For me, it's my sweet taste. Like I can't like, I'm already thinking about dessert before I even look at what's on the dinner menu. That's my problem.
This is why we get along.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, outside of that, I'm good.
Yeah, well, anyway, dip's gross. So don't, don't, wherever the cameras, don't dip.
Kids don't do that.
Don't dip.
Yeah, drink green juice instead.
Yeah, alkalizer green juice detoxify the body.
The athletic greens, I'm really enjoying those.
Athletic Greens doesn't sponsor this podcast yet.
Athleta?
Athletic.
Athletic. Oh, I was like.
This one's um.
They're a female clothing company. Hey, everyone. This week's episode is brought to you by Sheepskates Discount Bedding and Nightwear. All the comfort of sleep. Count your savings while you count your sheep.
Today's show, uh, the actual topic is about uh, mental health and dealing with this pandemic. Um, we're going to discuss some of our own experiences, how, how we've gotten through this. Um, people that are close to us and, and employees and, and people that were in, in contact with how the world is sort of handling this. Um, so it's an interesting discussion, fellas.
It is, a much needed one.
Yeah, we each have different experiences with it and viewpoints and, you know, obviously we share this business together and we're dealing with it in our own way, which we can talk about. But we each have our own lives outside of this too. Um, so I think it's, it's, it's something that everyone is dealing with in some way or another.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, Al, we'll start with you a little bit cuz I think you're, you're in a position that a, that a lot of people are in that's, that can be scary.
Yeah, it's like 1.4 million people or something. I don't know how many people, but.
It's a lot, right?
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot. Uh, wait, you mean like jobless people?
Unemployment, people filing for unemployment. Yeah.
Dude, it's like 30 million.
Oh, is it? It's how.
Yeah, it's not one point. It's, it's, it's well over that. I mean, I don't know, people might be, I don't know what the numbers are now. I don't know if you know or not, but we can look it up.
I stopped looking at the numbers.
But anyways, you tell the audience a little bit about your story. You're, you're a musician.
Yeah, I'm a entrepreneur. I've got an entertainment business, um, that revolves entirely around events and entertainment. So organizing events, large events and booking entertainment and of all scales, you know, um. So as a musician, you know, that's how I got into that world and I ended up knowing a lot of people and learning a lot of things. So started that business, but that's all irrelevant. But in the entertainment business, like we're, we're toast. We're cooked.
Done.
Like goodbye.
No gigs.
No gigs, no events and no like foreseeable future of them. It's not like phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. It's like phase four, maybe we'll see. Hmm, probably not though.
Is there any, what is the musician?
In this market, like, you know, Nashville, they've gone back to, you know, different things, but like for where I live and for the context of my business, like I'm, I'm cooked. I've been cooked for three months.
Are there any, what's going on in the musician space? Is there any, like, are you guys collaborating to try to, basically, let's get to the money part. Like, are you trying to make any money or is it sort of just like creative outlet right now?
Yeah, it's from, from the day it stopped and like, you know, the musicians that do it, thankfully, I was in a position where I didn't need to like, you know, I was okay for a few months, uh, thank God that, you know, I could like sort of make it by and pay my bills and whatever. Um, but for the musicians that are, you know, they're full-time musicians, they're hustling cats, you know, that wasn't my full-time gig. It was only like a third of my world. Um, but for those musicians, like in there, there was a period of time where, I mean, I think it was like two months where like, we couldn't get unemployment, we couldn't get through, things were crashed. I mean, it was just a terrible time and there was no money coming in. During that time, and it, almost every musician I, I know was going on like Facebook Live and they were doing like, you know, Venmo, Cash App, donation, live gigs. And it was just like, that's how they were generating money. Now, I don't know how much money they were making. I can't imagine that it was anywhere near what they would have made, what they would have made at a gig or at a wedding or whatever. But a hundred bucks is a hundred bucks. So if they made a hundred bucks, 200 bucks for doing a live three-hour show on Facebook, you know, everybody, everybody knows like those particular musicians that do it full-time and, and it worked for them. But that's not paying, that's not paying the bills, right? That's not paying their, it's not putting food in their, on their table for their family. So everybody was doing that. Now that the unemployment is kind of kicked in and like, you know, we all finally got it, we all got our stimulus checks and I think it was pandemic unemployment assistance or something like that, which applied to independent contractors, which that took some time cuz originally it didn't.
They've kind of backed off.
Now you've seen a real decline in like the hustle for the online bag and ask for money, uh, because like I think people are starting to get a little more comfortable, but it, it hurt and it still hurts cuz it's, you just, you know, you, you watch yourself go from a job and like a life and a career to nothing.
Yeah.
And then you have to think like, what if this lasts? Like what if, what if the, something happens to the virus, it comes back? What if this is an 18-month hiatus where like, I'm not having a big event for 18 months. I'm not playing a wedding gig for, you know, in our market, other markets, you know, they're doing their thing. But for where we live, it's a very frightening thing because three, four months is a long time to go without a penny.
Yeah, yeah. We're seeing so much pivoting right now too. And I think it's like, it's, it's necessary. Everyone's back is up against the wall or a lot of people's back is up against the wall.
We're all learning new skills.
And you're very right. Like, like now is the time to start thinking about doing something.
Yeah.
If by chance six months, nine months, whatever goes by from now.
Another lockdown happens.
Right.
Could happen.
Yeah, second wave. So like mu, you know, musician industry, the music industry, uh, uh, you know, any other like restaurants and, and things like that where you basically have to be there. Pivoting is a survival tactic at this point.
It is, it is.
The second wave comes, these restaurants that just opened up, get shut back down again.
Pivot.
I've already seen some places close, like they opened.
And closed.
And closed again because I think people are still not going out. So the, the overhead costs associated with being open.
Yeah.
After not making any money or relying on whatever check was coming in, now they're like, well, there's nobody showing up. So now we're paying all this money. And we've got the additional overhead costs that are associated that we're not being, you know, covered.
Yeah, and they can't go over 50%.
And they're closing because their employees are making more in unemployment than they are at their job and they're not coming back. They're like, I, I can't.
Right.
It's, it's better for me to stay out of work.
Yeah.
Which is a whole nother psychological, you know, screw job.
Cuz that's not gonna last forever.
That's not gonna last forever, but.
What happens when all of a sudden they're like, oh, sorry, cutting it off like.
Yeah, like, oh, now what? Well, you know, it's, it's psychologically, since this is the topic, it's very bad. And then, you know, some of the musicians like, people are talking to them like, well, you know, maybe it's time for you to get a real job. And like, they're going back to that, and I'm not talking about, you know, Nashville musicians that are, they're touring. I'm talking about local guys.
Yeah.
That are like, you know, they're not famous, but they do pretty damn good for themselves. Um, and they're hurting. And it's like some of these other tougher personalities, you'll see, I'll see in the comments. And again, thankfully, I have, you know, I hasn't, that hasn't affected me personally. Um, but they're, they're getting beat on, you know, they're like saying, don't go get a real job like, and you know, that is their real job, like, you know what I mean? Like.
Like when they went, going back to like when they first started.
Yeah, like what, what are you talking about? They have like hundreds, yeah, thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars invested in, in time and equipment. Like, what do you mean, go get a real job?
By the way, what the fuck is a real job?
That's what I'm saying.
Today's day and age.
Like, go get a real job. Oh, okay.
Like, have you heard of the internet and people making millions of dollars by fucking selling like the tops to this yeti that are like bedazzled?
Let me tell you.
There is no real job.
That's still very much a thing.
Oh, of course.
A real job is such a thing of like.
It's generational too, I think. Like I had a conversation with somebody this morning who, you know, this, this person left their job, state job, right, or county job, like, you know, our, we go back to the days of our parents where like.
Why would you give a pension?
State job, why would you give that up? And I'm like.
Work for the government.
Where's that taking you today? Like the state's freaking broker than broke.
Yeah.
And, and you want, we're just gonna put all of our retirement into working for the state and hoping that it's gonna be there at some point in time?
Yeah.
Come on.
It's crazy.
And it's, I mean, it's, it's sad that there is that, and I don't know, the generational differences, like isn't that always how it is, right?
Sure.
The generation doesn't understand the next one. And I actually think of that now that I'm a dad. I think about, okay, 20 years from now. TikTok is gonna be like in our eyeballs and you're just gonna be like, see, you know, shit, like, and you know, like Minority Report, like.
Yeah, I have always wanted that to be like real.
It'll, it'll be real. And I'm like preparing myself now to be like, don't be a fucking dick. Don't be an old asshole.
Who's like, go get a real job.
Yeah, take that shit out of your eyes. It's gonna burn your retinas or like.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Like, I'm, I'm preparing myself for that now because I, I, I see that very negatively impacting, you know, generations. Parents that have an expectation that their son should be the, like, should play football or should do this cuz that's what they want for them or should go to college for this because that's what they want for them. Like it makes the parent feel good and accomplished. Like I'm a good parent because I got my son or daughter to do this.
This is their definition of success. Like, oh, my son's a doctor, my son's, and we need doctors and lawyers. Don't get me wrong. You want to be that great, but.
But if it's not a good fit and it like goes into, and I know you understand this a little bit, uh, as well, like there's so many opportunities in manufacturing to get fantastic jobs. Right out of high school, like there's a severe shortage in manufacturing even before this pandemic.
Oh, yeah.
Manufacturing jobs because that's, that's where you go if you are too dumb to go to college. Like that's the stigma, right? If you, if you're too much of a fuck up or you're too dumb to go to college, then you'll go, you go get a factory job or something.
Or, or a trade today. Like we are, we desperately need, you know, kids that are coming in from a high school and like not sure what they want to do with college. Like go learn a trade, go be a plumber.
Yeah.
An electrician, a contractor, like learn with your hands.
I hope that shift continues to happen at a rapid rate where the stigmas of what your job is dictates how people view you as a, as a intelligent being.
Yeah.
You know, cuz I know some guys that like, I wish I had their, I wish I had a fraction of their knowledge and, you know, you put that guy out in the world and say like, hey, what do you think this, what do you think this guy does? You know, he would get shit on, but I know them personally and I'm like, that guy's a thousand times smarter than you and you've got three degrees.
And honestly, who cares if they're happier than a pig in shit?
Like.
Remember the show Dirty Jobs?
Oh, yeah.
Love that show.
Happiness is paramount.
Kudos to him for creating that and wanting to expose that because I feel like that's general idea is what the world needs.
I hope it continues.
Uh, you know, to, to, like picture a kid who's a gamer right now, loves playing video games, you know, wants to be a pro gamer. Parents are like, you know, what the fuck are you doing sitting around like, but that kid could go play the video games, you know, all spare time, become great, go get an electrician job, make a really great income and do what he loves.
Right.
You know, on the side or, you know, maybe he turns that into earning money through tournaments and stuff like that, but he's, he's an electrician.
Right.
Or she's an electrician and, and makes 50, 60, 70 grand a year depending on where you are.
And it's funny you say that cuz I have a friend who I just talked to last night about basically her kid, um, young, he's a kid, he's a kid's young, like whatever, maybe eight or 10 or whatever. And he's playing video game. I mean, he's obsessed with video games. Like he is just, doesn't want to be outside. He, when he goes outside, he's like, I just want to get back into like, you know, play the game. So they got into a little tiff about whatever he made some, you know, char, unapproved charges for the game. You know, like with mom's credit card. And so she got upset and so we were talking about it and.
Bought the gold cloak.
You're like, what are you talking about? $300 is a steal. Like, so anyway, you know, so if they're in that position, you know, and she's like, you know, totally beside herself on it. Just, she's like, what? Like, you know, so she's like selling, you know, gonna sell all the systems and, you know, super.
Overreact.
Overreacting. And anybody would initially think that. And I said, well, yeah, I go, that, that's a lot of money. Like that sucks unless he becomes a millionaire gamer. And then it doesn't suck. And, and so the question is, as a parent, I know we're getting off track here from like mental health, but like, as a parent, how do you like, take a, a, let's say a bad behavior that you perceive to be a bad behavior, whether it's, is it right to charge the credit card? No. Like, how do you take a bad behavior and find out if your kid is like on the track to be the best at what they're doing or if they're just like, you know, whatever, not that, right? So how do you like, how do you have the conversation? I don't have kids, so you guys can, I'll defer to you, but like, how do you have that conversation to see like, okay, like if this is your thing, then like, let's make it your thing.
I think step one, listen, this is, is advice that I'm only gonna give to myself because I'm not a parent long enough to give it to anybody else, but.
We're experts on nothing.
But yeah, uh, especially this, at least myself. Uh, and definitely not you cuz you have no offspring.
Correct. I had a cat.
You had a cat?
For a week. And I taught it nothing.
That actually gives you negative knowledge.
That's backwards.
But the, the, the thought, at least the thought in, in your appearance, you know, chime in here, but is that step one should be understanding what the thing is, right? Like, so if they're a video game, you know, aficionado, or maybe that's not even a word cuz you don't know if they are, but they're just an enthusiast.
Yeah, passionate.
Understand what, like, like what's going on? Like, why are they like it? It like, why do you think video games are bad? I'm just saying like, understand the situation before you just automatically shit on like, oh, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna.
Brain trash.
Yeah, brain trash, their career, like they're not gonna build, build a career. They're gonna be staying at home until there's 50 playing video games in the basement. Like that's probably what goes through a lot of, you know, older parents. Uh, or even, even like high millennial parents, maybe, maybe not. But understand like what it is, like understand the potential, understand why they love it. Understand the, you know, their general passion to figure out, is it actually detrimental to anything?
So, so I can speak to this very thing?
Please do.
Very directly.
My son is 42, which is impossible cuz you're only like 43.
So my, my middle son, who's, uh, he'll be 21, he's going to school for computer science, right? So all three of the boys played video games growing up, but my middle son, Matt, he, uh, was more in tune with, with the games and stuff. And so didn't really find out like why until later on. Actually with, just like within the last probably six to 12 months. So computer science major and says that, you know, he, he really has this passion for wanting to play video games and start a channel. Like be, be, you know, filmed.
Yep.
And, and I had just seen that happen six months prior to us having that chat where there's a place in Schenectady with this indoor stadium where people play video games and people actually come and watch.
It's unbelievable.
Them play the games.
Yeah.
And I'm like, wait a minute. So you're telling me that kids come in here and play or adults or whatever, all ages, and they have an audience watching them play a game. And he's like, dude, this guy's telling me, yeah.
It's nuts.
So I go back to my son and I'm like, hey, so here's where we tie it back into business.
Right.
Like, you wanna do that? Great. You're going to school. You've got skin in the game through your student loans along with whatever help you're getting outside of those. And you wanna do this? Tell me the business plan behind it.
Right.
So this is where you call them to the carpet and say, hey, brother, you're not gonna have the, the chastising conversation that says, you're gonna be some dirtbag who's gonna sit on his couch eating Doritos and cheese puffs at 50 years old, right? It's like, tell me how the business works and let's see if you, if this is really what you think it's going to be or should be.
Right.
So did you start your YouTube channel yet? No. How much time have you spent recording yourself? None? You already know how many hours it takes to become an expert. How many hours is that? Yeah, I know, dad, it's 10,000 hours. How many hours you got in? Like, so then they start to see, like, okay, maybe this isn't what I wanna do. So rather than.
Right.
Berating them and knocking them down like, great, you wanna do that? Let's go. But you know, you're smart enough to know the business psychology behind everything that you need to do if you wanna make this an actual thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go for it. But, and then sooner or later, then it starts to be like, ah, maybe this isn't what I wanna do.
Right, yeah.
But we didn't like, you know, make it a bad thing or negative. We just walked it out as a business plan.
Right.
You know?
I hope, I hope, I hope the world continues to go in that direction and parents keep getting better at like figuring out what their kids are actually, should be from like, by the, you know, from when they're eight. Like watch them and be like, oh, yeah, you're gonna be, this is, this is your thing.
Well, how much of that has changed? So we, going back to our original topic of the mental health during all of this, right? So how much shifting and changing took place at home with families? Because you've got both mom and dad at home with multiple kids and you've gotta do school and teach them and this and that. And all of a sudden, you know, the kids see what mom and dad kind of go through on a daily basis of like, oh crap, I gotta get up. And they, they actually go to work all day long.
Yeah.
And then they come home and they make us dinner and do this and that.
Right.
And the, the, um, the parents have a different understanding for the kids during COVID because they're like, holy crap, these kids are having to sit through this all day long. Now there's a new respect and appreciation for the teachers. And so it all starts to come around full circle in so many different levels. Because people are now seeing all that because they're home all day long together and they're seeing what each other's worlds look like. And then everybody has handled that, you know, a little differently. Like, God bless you as a parent, if you've got kids, two, three, four, five at home and they're at a certain age. And you've gotta do that and run your business if you're self-employed or do your job or whatever that is, like our kids are grown and, and out of the house. So, you know, for me, you know, like, thank God, I mean, I, so I still have a, you know, I have a full-time job in business development outside of, you know, my partnership with you guys. And then I had started my own business just prior to, you know, us forming the Noble Company. And all of that stuff smacked me in the face, just like so many others.
Yeah.
Right as COVID, you know, kicked in. Like I was just getting ready to start a, a business leadership, you know, business, helping other companies and businesses to, you know, teach their, their team leadership and. That stopped. So just like Al's stuff stopped with, because you can't have a venue to play music in. I had businesses that were closed or there's no venue to have a speaking opportunity. So that all went away.
Yeah.
And, you know, so luckily my job was deemed essential and, you know, I would get up in the morning and, um, I'm normally an early riser, getting up at like 5:00, 5:30 and as COVID went on, that shifted to like, I got lazy and I didn't get up until seven. And for some people, that's still early, some it's not. Just depends on what your, what your day looks like. But I would get up and, you know, I started a routine. So as we're talking about this subject of, you know, your mentality during COVID and what that all looks like, I just knew that I needed to have a routine.
Yeah.
And I knew there was like things, I saw it early on enough to know that I'm getting a gift of time actually back. So for me, the COVID experience was actually fantastic.
Really?
And most people probably aren't gonna tell you that, but.
Was it from, what happened from the beginning though, when that shift happened? Like what happened in your brain? Were you like, oh shit? I mean, cuz you had, did you, did you know your full-time job was gonna be okay? Did you, what'd you think about the, the leadership thing? We can talk about what happened with us in a little bit, but.
So, yeah, so initially you shit your pants cuz you're like, okay, am, am I gonna have a job? What's, what does that all look like? But, you know, luckily that was a very quick pivot. And as soon as, you know, the company decided we're gonna go get the, the PPP loan, you know that, okay, at least for a, a window of time, things are good. And, and, and actually, uh, activity increased for my day job. So that was great. And I knew, you know, we, that gave us time at night for us to do our normal nighttime activity for the Noble Company.
Yeah.
But the, uh, the, my blueprint leadership, that stopped altogether, like screaming halt, just as I was getting ready to start, like it stopped.
Yeah.
So I'm like, okay, what's the, the positive of this? I've just been trained to mentally think through this differently than what most people may do during a situation like this. And I said, okay, first thing up, I just got 10 hours a week more back in my schedule cuz I wasn't having to drive all over the place anymore. So I'm like, shit, what, what can I do with 10 more hours a week? So I got up, I worked out, I set my plan for what I was gonna eat for the day. So consistency for, for me in those areas is always beneficial. Because it's the inconsistency when like anything else, like a diet or, you know, you get hit with a roadblock or whatever, that usually derails a human being. And then you're like, well, shit, that just fell apart.
Yeah.
I got consistency back in my schedule.
How quick did that process hit you?
Two to three weeks.
Yeah.
And I'm like, okay, let's go. Once I get past the fear of like, what is the, what does our income look like?
Yeah.
Then it was like, okay, great. Let's go boom, 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 boom. And so it would be, you know, I'd get up in the morning, do my thing, work my, my, my job for, you know, eight to nine hours a day. And then, you know, small break for dinner and then back at it for, for our noble company to get that going on and then.
Yeah. And thank God you had that insight to like initiate that quick. I mean, it was not, it was not like that for me. And I think.
I was gonna say, what, what was it like for you? Cuz you're the opposite. He found out he's okay. You, you were not okay. So.
I, I, yeah, I mean mentally and we can really like start to like, you know, laser focus on, cuz we have, we have tons of examples of, of ways to, to help with the mental, you know, whatever. Mental piece of all of this. I had a terrible time. Literally up until, like I struggled tremendously mentally, like anxiety, significant anxiety, depression, like really bad shit. And, and like, right up until probably a week ago where I was like, this is, this is taking a toll on me that I don't even understand. But like, you know, there were days I just, I just didn't do anything. Like I just didn't get off the couch all day. I laid on the couch all day and ate trash because I had nothing to look forward to. I would wake up and I would think, oh my gosh.
Yeah, you were like sort of paralyzed?
I was paralyzed with depression.
I can't go anywhere.
I can't go anywhere. I can't see anyone.
Can't work.
I have nothing to do. I can't work. And, you know, unfortunately, I get it. Like there were, now looking back at it with some clarity and a, and a great therapist, like, you know, there's a lot of things you can do to fight all that. And, and it comes, always comes down to very rigid routines. Like forcing yourself into these routines and not for three days, like that's, that's great, but like, that's not a success. Like, you know, every day you do the same thing. And all of our, you know, a lot of our speakers are very, very bullish on this. David Meltzer is a, is a big time like routine guy and that like runs his life.
Structure.
Structure. And, you know, I have a sort of a structureless career, right? Where like.
Sure.
Incomes change.
Your structure hits at like six o'clock at night.
Right, like, yeah, like once I'm, you know, it's a very structural, but it's, it's, it's very structured in a sense, like it's chaotic structure. You know, it's.
Organized chaos.
Yeah, organized chaos and I love it. But when you get up in the morning, I get up on a Saturday morning, right? And I know like. And I know like, oh shit, I gotta be at the venue two o'clock today, blah, blah, blah. I have something to look forward to. It's, I love what I do. Love what I do. And I, even in its highest form of stress. And I'll tell you, I have been struggling and even with in and even in our meetings, right? When we've had multiple meetings and multiple times where I even told the therapist the other day, I go. I'm sure that like my partners can see me, like. Trail off mentally, like there's like a fog in my eyes or in my head or I'm like.
There was, I was gonna say, there was one day. Where, so there's one day I called you after.
To check on me.
To check on you.
And I appreciate that.
And then there was a separate day a little bit later where Rob called me. And he goes, yeah, would I, basically that, is he okay?
The answer, well, I am okay, but and I appreciate it, but like the answer was no. I was not okay. I was like. What, like, what am I doing? I I like, I was so. And I still have that and and now I'm starting to feel better cuz I'm putting some things into place which we're gonna talk about. But this process crippled me and sent me into a depression about like purpose. Like what, I'm useless, I'm, I have no purpose, I have no.
So this is super interesting. Because you, you had some of this before the pandemic. Right? Like you had some of that uncertainty.
Yeah, I'm very used to seasonal ups and downs.
Remember you were like, I'm gonna move to Florida.
Oh mentally, I was in a very strange place. And I talked a lot to you about it, even in my, I was struggling in my relationship. I was like, I don't know what to do. I was just so uncertain about so many things.
So that brings that.
And I still am. Well, it's the truth, like I feel uncomfortable inside.
Maybe you'll have some insight here cuz like, so this, this article says, uh, it's a recent study by the CDC and the Census Bureau. Um, they did a survey of a lot of people. I can't, I don't know the number here, but. A third, okay, so two hundred and sixty thousand people responded. A third of them. Have anxiety or depression based on the survey, right? And the majority of them are young, eighteen to twenty-nine. And then it literally goes down, like, look at this. It literally like the older you get, the less it, like the less. Is it because you think they're more financially stable? Or like when you're eighteen to twenty-nine, you're in your. My, my feeling and I want your guys thoughts, like my feeling is like, when you're eighteen to twenty-nine, you're like hungry, you're figuring it out, like you're ready to go. And you you can't go anywhere. Like, this thing sort of stopped. School, colleges, um, progress. Hiring freezes, like that kinda thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lack of patience. I think when you have a a very hungry, aggressive type. Uh, generation that. No matter, no matter what, no matter how the world changes, there is a, there is somewhat of a timing to things. And like, from the beginning of time, like patience was something that everybody always needs, right? You can go as fast as you want, but like there is sort of this like, over time, things grow. Like, right, nothing hap- truly happen, unless you hit the lottery, right? What, what, who cares about that? But like, it takes time for shit to grow into the stu- into the vision that you have in your head. You know, and I think that's a big part of it, but I also think just expectations, like. Being uncomfortable with where you're going, like you have this big future planned out in your head. And there's a very, very uncertain roadmap how to get there. And I think older people are there and rewiring the road cuz they've already gotten there and they're like, oh, this is not quite what I wanted. And now they're rewiring it, but they have a a slower, more methodical, you know. But I don't know, I don't, I.
Could also be the, uh, actually, this is probably bigger, but the social aspect of it.
In terms of what?
Like, the older I get, the more okay I am just with my inner circle and family of people.
You care about outside opinion.
Right. I don't need to make new friends to be happy. When you're eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, you're looking for your. Your mate, your figure, you know, you're trying to find new friends, you're moving to new cities, meeting new people and and.
This circle changes. Multiple times.
So maybe that's why it's, yes, like the younger, because like, I I'm thinking of, um.
I'm sure there's a fifty fifty reasons contributing to that, at least.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm thinking of a a a younger woman that I know, um, and, you know, she's halted. You know, she doesn't have a job, um, she can't see her friends, her friends like moved away. Right before like this all happened, but she didn't. And so she's like stuck now. She's very not happy, you know.
And so what about you, John? I mean, so you, uh, have multiple businesses going on. Then the noble company comes in, that's three businesses, new family. Your wife shifts from leaving her job, being a new mom. To joining, you know, the Good Monster team. And I mean, that's a lot of changes in a short period of time. So yes, I think what people don't know is that. A lot of that you planned for. And you've had flexibility with that. But how did that shift? Like, so how did the the ninety days of of covid? Impact you guys as as a new family?
Um, so for me, I I I'm very comfortable in chaos. So immediately when, I mean, it was like, immediately when this thing started, I'm already thinking of like all the ways. All the thing, like that's where the show, the waffle show, I'm here for the waffles came up. As soon as I realized, you know, our our sale, for Good Monster, our sales program. Wasn't working anymore cuz nobody was answering, nobody was hiring new company, nobody. As soon as I realized that, I immediately shifted to building the brand. Putting out as much content as we can so people know who Good Monster is, people know who I am. So that was a quick pivot. I'm, I'll just go through some of the quick mindsets, like there was that. Um, for, uh, you know, I'll be honest with you, for Jackson Jovi, it was, it was already kind of going down because of. Just operational stuff, figuring out how to buy more inventory, that kind of stuff, manufacturing. Lindsay and I have not figured that out in a way that's that's good. Luckily though, that was always our. I wanna call it the pet project cuz it's not like it was like, ah, this is cool little thing. Like, we really invested a lot of time. Like, you guys know, we traveled all over the country. But for that, we we sort of decided that as long as we can. May, you just maintain the brand and and just keep it, keep it where it is. We'll be okay and we'll get through this year, basically, cuz summertime, nobody, nobody's buying jeans. Um, but for Lindsay, she mo- she left her job and started working for Good Monster. Right when this all happened, like literally right at the very beginning. I wanna say like March was, now she had maternity leave. And then moved into into leaving, you know, right after that, but like, she did that right at the beginning of March. You know, two weeks before this all started to happen. So. You know, uh, you know, and I won't get into details cuz I wanna make her uncomfortable, but I know that leaving her job. Not going into a new job, you know, the company where she's seen it from afar, but hasn't been in it. And being a new mom for the first time has been pretty rough. It's been hard on her, juggling it all, trying to figure it out. And, you know, I I do the best I can to try to help her through that, obviously, to, you know, be a father, to to be a partner there. Um, to be a partner in 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 Good Monster and help her along there. And, you know, I think we've gotten to a place where it's really good. But it's, it's been a bit of a struggle for her to feel comfortable.
Yeah, find her place.
Find her place, right?
But a blessing at the same time to be able to stay home and and be a new mom and just. Enjoy that. I think that's the blessing when so many moms have to like, okay, now my, I give, my time is up, now I gotta go back to work. Like, she can, she doesn't have to do that.
And you're right, we have been planning that for a what, for years. We've been planning, here's our exact plan. It is to be able to be in a place financially, uh, where we can have, we can spend time in Rocket Lake. For as long as we want.
Yeah, financial freedom.
Um, so, so we've built Good Monster, built Good Monster's been remote for three years.
Control of time and money.
Um, we want a place in Florida. So we can go down in Florida. We're even talking about having the kids when they grow, of course. I'll even have that giant dog. The chairs, I'll I'll get a, I'll get side-by-side chairs. So we we're, we've mapped everything towards being able to do that. And so, whether it's luck, whether it's. You know, obviously our hard work, but. Because we've been building for that and and the timing happened to be that it sort of just happened right before the pandemic. This has, thank God, not affected us that much.
That's great.
We, like, I have conver- conference calls with, um, some of our bigger clients. And the CEO is on there, conference calls, fifteen people on there, whatever, where the marketing agency, they got. You know, their finance team, just everybody on there. And, uh, she's talking, um. And our kids are going ape shit in the background. And she's just talking through the whole thing. She's, sorry, guys, I don't know what to do. And like. You know, like.
What do you do?
She's built this multi-multi-million dollar company. It's, it's her family's company, but now they're, you know, global company. And she's at a nanny the whole time and, you know, some conference calls, her husband's. Her, she'll, she'll be, she'll be talking loud and then her kids will be screaming and her husband's talking loud on his own conference call. On the other room and it's just chaos. And she goes, Dylan, I'll be right back. And just puts us on mute and then we're like, okay, and like continue on.
I said.
But it's, we've built this and, I mean, you guys know me, there's literally. No limit to like my dreams. I am. Yeah, like that fucking movie, the pill, like I wish I was as smart, but like. Like I, I, Lindsay's very much more grounded than me, like I'm fucking floating like with my balloon. Back down here, but she's much more like, ah, can we really do that? And I'm like, why not? Literally, like.
It's a good balance.
A very good balance.
So. You're the guy that like builds the ark. You're the guy, it's like we're building an ark, there's gonna be a flood.
Well, I'll plan it and then I'll get distracted by one of the birds flying by and then somebody else will finish my building for me cuz I can't concentrate. Unless it's a table like this, cuz this is short. But thankfully, we've been lucky enough. And then, so the one piece that I was nervous about and that we did prepare for was that. What if all of our clients just stop, stop? What if, um, you know, cuz we have, we have consumer. Clients and they're, they're in Targets and all those stores and some of those closed down and. You know, we have some grocery store cl- grocery clients, food clients and, you know, they they were, but at the very beginning, we had no idea. We had no idea and I'm like, Good Monster could literally just lose all of our clients tomorrow. Like they could all just happen to email at the same time, hey, sorry, you guys are doing great work, cuz it, there's no control. Even though I can thankfully say, like, we are doing very good for all of our current clients right now and helping them grow. And we were at the time, this is uncontrollable. Like, this is something where we could be crushing it, but they could still. Have to shut down. And so for about two weeks, we basically, like. You know, we have, we have like a grocery budget for like the month, right? We basically were like, okay, let's just eat rice and beans for the week. Franks and beans, let's, um, let's look at all of our expenses, let's cut all the shit that that is. Just like memberships that are going, we don't even realize are going, like we all sort of get like, oh fuck, I haven't.
I haven't been to Planet Fitness in like nine months, you know, and all cuz it's only fifteen dollars a month.
They, seems that they did pause our.
They did.
They did, like I haven't gotten a bill from them.
So, yeah, we had that time period where we were unsure and we, but we both were like, okay, let's, let's. Just like the rest of America and the world dumped some money into savings, right? Spending was down, savings were like up thirty percent. I don't know if you guys saw these numbers, but like everyone was doing the same exact thing. And then we figured out it was gonna be okay.
We're going on like over an hour, which is totally cool. I s- I think that the topic is good and flowed nice, but I think we should do a part two of this. And really deep dive into, like, the the strategies of of good mental health, cuz we haven't really gotten there yet.
And I think here's what people are are looking at now. Yeah, I think that, so look, by by no means are we subject matter experts on mental health or or any of that stuff. So we're, we're sharing with you guys, the audience as to what we've personally gone through. Being in business, right? We're, we're in business together, we're in business, you know, outside of that as well, like. People wanna know, what what's, what's next? You know, the audience that we're, we're typically speaking to is in. Sales or marketing or business development or or they own a business of some capacity. And so, you know, what is, what is the next? Six months look like? Because we don't know, you know, what what's gonna happen. I mean, we could get a resurgence as we're. Doing this show today, we're, we're hearing reports of the media and I think all three of us try to stay out of the news, you know, other than. Being surface level, you know, informed that there are spikes happening.
South's getting smoked.
Different parts of the country, you know, I think we did a good job here in the northeast of. Um, staying locked down for, uh, you know, three months and I think that's gonna hopefully have a positive impact for us, but. Like, as we get out and about again and trying to to get back to some of our daily lives. We're gonna be pivoting and shifting and changing for probably the next year and a half.
Absolutely. And some of the things will stick and stay.
Right. And so like, so I'm trying to figure out, okay, how do, how do we get back out and. Continue to meet with people without the restrictions. And this is where you've gotta get creative in in what you're doing, like. People are sick and tired of sitting in front of a camera and doing another Zoom meeting or a Google Duo or a webinar, whatever. So, so here's what I've done. So some, some tactical information, cuz you guys know that, that's what we try to be about, is tactical information that you can take. And put back into place in your business. So I'm like, okay, how do I? Be able to get back into a, uh, to speaking somewhere where there's not hotel restrictions or meeting with people. So, number one. Set up a kayak trip, right? Found a, found a place where they rent kayaks for three hours. Kayak, paddleboard, whatever, no freaking masks, you're outside, you're getting vitamin D, it's all healthy, you're out in nature. And we can get out on the water. And there's no group restrictions, like, right? Like there would be at a, at a hotel where you can only twenty-five or you can only do fifty percent capacity. All that shit just went out the window. So I set it up, we'll do a date, we're gonna do a rain date in case the weather's crappy. And we're outside and everybody.
The three of us?
Well, I, so we can do that.
Al, how do you feel about being outside with bugs and?
So it's, it's, you know. I like nature, I like nature, if it's controlled. Golf courses, resorts. Yeah, not like. Biodeome, yeah. I do like man-made nature. I like more controlled nature environments. I like throwing me in a kayak is probably not. A great idea. I mean, I don't know, I've never actually.
You're, you'd be on a river, so it's not like you got. Does that make you squirm?
A river?
Small river.
Like I'm not in control of the movement of the river.
Oh, we're not talking like the Mississippi, we're talking like, uh.
Pause, pause.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, so I would be like.
We can get you, we'll go to a water safari if it opens back up.
I've been to water safari.
That's control.
Lazy river?
It's very, it is controlled.
But you can get out at any time.
So that's what I'm trying to get away from. Is the con- is the control of what the rules are. So anyway, that's, that's.
Maybe just take John.
The, uh, the other thing is, uh, is renting a boat and having business meetings.
That I'm cool with.
On a boat, so made a couple phone calls, got some contacts. Again, we can get on the boat. And the sheriff on the lake is not gonna come out and be like, you guys have your mask on and you know, blah, 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 no. As long as you're not doing anything stupid. So these are ideas, small, inexpensive for for people that are in business to contribute to. We can continue on having meetings. And then the last thing I found was this, which I've showed you guys is, I'm super excited about this outdoor amphitheater.
Oh, yeah, outdoor conferences.
So, you know, uh, it's, think of it as a mini noble, uh, uh, you know, version of what we're trying to do on a larger scale. Bring your own chair, wrap it up with a happy hour. And provide people, you know, locally here within New York State with some tactical information and. We don't have to worry about the the control and the restrictions of what what's being mandated right now. You know, and so those are three ideas I've had in the last two weeks and they're all gonna happen within the next thirty to ninety days.
Love you.
Yeah, so like. Let's go, let's just. So many people are still pressing the pause button. I'm like, look, let's get this done next week. And everybody's just looking at me and I'm like. I'm, I'm going with or without you, so.
Can you imagine all the pharmaceutical reps stealing your idea? Like, gone, gone are the days of a sub platter that you bring into the doctor. It's like, you know what? I've rented a boat for all of you.
Let's go.
Take the day off, come on out.
We're going on the boat.
Get a table full of drugs and talk about it on the water.
And I think we will each have our own tactical version of that, but like if you guys, for everybody who's watching this. You've gotta start thinking like that, you've gotta start changing. And it doesn't have to be drastic and dramatic. Small, tangible, movable things that you can start to work on right away, which is. That you can start to work on right away, which is what you guys know we're we're all about.
And it's it's, you know, we're lucky, it's easy for us to to say that, you know, in our position. And that's great advice. How do you get somebody who's? In an anx- an anxious position where. Where they're not, cuz in my mind, I'm thinking the same thing, like I, right after, I'm like, dude, go on lives, play saxophone every. Every night, um, be yourself, you're funny, like I was like. But how do you? You know, you weren't quite there. How do you make that shift? What what? Have you made it?
Psychologically, what happened to me there is that like, you know, there are, there are many different types of musicians and people. There are guys that like, you know, th- these are the super hustler guys, they're playing the bar scene, they're they're making the hundred to two hundred to three hundred dollar. Marks in the bar scene. You know, they got the tip jars out, like that's a very natural state for them. You know, I did that a long time ago, that was that was something that that eh, made me happy, but I didn't get into that scene. In particular, I saw, I saw the scene that I wanted to be in, which was the the wedding circuit, the mark, the corporate. Uh, you know, next tier. Where it's a little, you know, it's a little more businessy. And and the job security was there without some of the risks of like the bars and I didn't wanna be in.
The wedding singer.
Right, like, so I saw that and I was like, I wanna be in, I wanna be like in the wedding scene, I wanna be in the corporate event scene. As a musician, cuz I thought I'm, you know, I, whatever, I was where I wanted to go. So to make the pivot from that, this is all psychological. For me, like, I don't do the tip jar thing, like I don't, like, a company pays the band money. And then we get our checks and whatever, direct, whatever. I felt so, so uncomfortable going online. And like basically saying.
Opening up the virtual tip jar.
Give me money. I I felt, and there's nothing wrong with it, it's a beautiful thing. I know plenty of cats that are incredible players that do it. And they're comfortable with it. For me, I was like, I did it one time and it was for charity, it was for the benefit of Cherry, we made a bunch of money. And I felt great about that. But for me, as someone who had, uh. Multiple things, like people know me for being a musician, for being a video guy, for being a whatever guy, you know, like I have a, my hands in a lot of different stuff. I felt so uncomfortable committing myself to like the musician hat and saying like, I need money. Cuz the truth was, the money would have helped, but I didn't need, like, it wasn't like I was dying, right? Like my bills were getting paid, I was uncomfortable, but I wasn't. And that was a total psychological screw up in my head, cuz I should have done.
Is it like limiting beliefs?
It's it's, it was just a blockage of like, I don't feel comfortable going online, playing my instrument. And asking for money for myself. Something, something blocked me from feeling comfortable with that. Knowing that other people were in difficult positions, like you don't need to give me, like you don't.
Are you aware of like um, like Spotify and SoundCloud and and how those work in terms of money? How could, is there, is there a reason you didn't go that road or you just never even considered?
I never even considered it because so, you know, I don't have an album, right? I don't have my, I'm not a, I'm not an. Original music producer, like I don't write my own music, I I can, but like that's not my thing. I'm what's called a working musician. I'm a performer, I'm an entertainer and performer, and that's like, you know, the one thing, but there's no, there's no. Not gonna say there's no space for it, but like, you start doing cover songs and you gotta get permission to do those cover songs and like. You know, there's a whole thing that comes with that. I just wanna go out and play for crowds and get paid. I have no desire to like try to break into the streaming, you know, like, that's just not my desire.
What if you had to, which you you maybe came pretty close to doing.
I would pivot, like in this, I pivoted into real estate and I pivoted into uh, some other digital things that I knew like. I gotta go into these other, these other markets that have nothing to do with music and find ways to create. Um, I hate to say passive income, I hate that cuz nothing is passive. Like, but create streams of revenue in other industries that I need to get knowledgeable knowledgeable about, because if my music world takes a dive. I know that I'm not gonna try to like grow some inauthentic music world that I have no business being in. I'm not a writer. I'm not a streamer, I'm not a liver, I and I want, it would make me dreadfully unhappy if I had to force that.
So you'd be happier going and making money in real estate or di- or editing.
I'm gonna go learn all this shit. Yeah, like I love real estate, I love stock market, I love all these other places that have nothing to do with music. But if I start to screw with the formula of what makes me happy musically, and then that becomes an arduous, like. Uphill battle, I'm gonna be miserable and I'm not gonna make any money because the amount of time that it takes to make money on those things. It's it's a, you know, it's a long term play.
So let's, this is, this is a great conversation. Let's um. Let's end with maybe one tip from each of us or like a couple tips, because listen, there's a lot of. Information out there on how like, how to basically deal with the pause, you know, so, you know, getting a routine, working out. Green juice, be healthier, like that's all sort of like, how do we get through this momentary time and maintain some sanity? And that's very important and people are are, you know, unfortunately, a third, you know, possibly a third of people are feeling this an- anxiety and depression, but. Getting over that, the only way to get over that long term is to do like what you said, like figure out a way to move forward as humans. I feel like this is To- Tony Robbins that said something like this. The fundamental core. Need of a human being is progress, is to is is to see some progress in themselves. Like they're doing something, they're productive, like people that feel like they're not productive, they're not a part of society. Like they're alienated, they're not, they're not giving anything to. It's bad, you're in a bad place, right?
A lack of purpose is is a death sentence.
Purpose, that might actually been it.
Felt like you were, right? I mean. I'm telling you, it was, it was bad.
So so from each of our perspectives, right? So you you had the perspective of being like halted and like having nowhere to go. You know, mine was, mine was pivoting because I had a little bit more ownership of the businesses and. Um, uh, that side, yours was, you you had the steady job that kept going. You know, but then you also had the perspective of your own businesses that sort of changed. We never really got into our business, but I feel like we've talked about that, the noble.
This can be an ongoing, I don't, I think this particular topic is something we should bring back.
We'll bring, yeah.
Guests and people because the importance of uh, mental health, like if, just like your physical body, like if your physical body fails. You will be stopped from everything, including the things that you love. If your mental health fails. You will be stopped from everything, including the things that you love. Like, those are the two most important things to take care of is your mental and physical health. Otherwise, nothing else is possible. I don't care how much you love it.
So leave, leave everyone here listening or watching, um, one or two thoughts and tips of how they can overcome. An anxious, depressed sort of state that they might be in right now, to try to go and do something. We'll start with you, Rob.
Yeah, I can't, so I can't speak to to like to Al's situation, that that wasn't me, so. Uh, to me, it's John Maxwell calls it the piston theory, right? So like we just already said. Uh, if all of the pistons in your vehicle aren't firing, what what's what's gonna happen to the vehicle? It's gonna run like shit, right? So we need to look at our bodies as as a vehicle, so we need to keep all of our pistons in our. In our being running well. So that means working out to some capacity, that means eating right. That means reading and staying mentally sharp and you know, getting outside and doing things, whatever that is for for you as an individual. You've got, you've gotta figure that out, but I'm telling you, you've gotta keep all of the cylinders firing because something will suffer. Like you might be able to limp the vehicle down the road, but something's gonna suffer. And so you've gotta figure out what that is, get off war of the cylinders firing. And just be consistent with them in some small degree every day.
Uh, mine is look for opportunities, right? And and I guess I can't speak to the mental block that might be there. You'll have to figure out a way to get past the mental block, maybe it is. Exercise routine and nutrition and some of the things that you can deal with now will get you out of that. Vitamin D is something that they found people are severely deficient in and could could be, you know, part of the reason why the. I mean, it is linked to depression and exactly, right? So the physical aspect will get there, but look for opportunities. So I mean, I could rattle off hundreds of things, like if you're a college student. And I mean, now they're gonna be going back to school, but look for internships at businesses that are, that are going, like. Ask for free advice, ask for opportunities, start creating content, put yourself out there, like this kind of movement and just. Like what I did with the show with waffles, like figure out what opportunities are out there. Try really hard not to dwell on the the opportunities that are not there, because the that's the way you are supposed to be going. I know there's people in my family and close circle that are that are crippled still by this, that the path they were going. Is not possible right now and maybe not possible for the long term, and they just can't get out of that lane. There's fifteen roads that are going this way that could be very fruitful for them. Possibly financially as well as, you know, um, their soul. And they don't even see him. They're just staring down this straight, street and they see a road back right there. So look for the opportunities. If you're an entrepreneur and you have to close your business, you you know entrepreneurship, right? Like you had. You know, sold off your your lawn care company and you ate shit for a while to get to the next step, right? So. Life is coming at you, look for opportunities, because it will open up doors, meet new people. Uh, Zoom call with random people. I've I've actually had a few people reach out to me via LinkedIn.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, just to chat about opportunities. There's no wrong answer when you're looking for opportunities. Like it sounds so, and it's not even, I hate to say it cuz it's not really tactical, it's very like vanilla. And I hate being vanilla, but like, some of those tactics would be LinkedIn message people, DM people.
Just keep going.
Just keep swimming. So that's, that's my, that's the best piece of advice I can have is because that's. I believe where, why I'm in the position that I'm in now is I just keep looking for opportunities. When one door shuts. Open another one and just rinse and repeat. And if you're off your road that you thought you were supposed to be on, it sucks. But the longer you dwell on it, the more depressed you're gonna get, the more you'll go down the rabbit hole. Um, it's just not a good, it's not a good rabbit hole to be in.
No, and I I'll take what you guys said and and kind of condense it down to a a more micro approach, um. I agree with all the things that you're saying, all all pistons should be firing, just keep going, um. But for the people that understand that, but like, just can't move, they get crippled, they get. They can't find the motivation, they can't find the clarity, they can't find the anything to actually start that process, like. So you just start, right? And that's so much easier said than done, um, for so many people, like, oh, just start, well, like. I can't cuz I am filled with, I don't even know what. So my advice would to be. Be like laser tuned in and focused, tapped in, tuned on, turn whatever you wanna call it, like to your. Self, in the same way that like if you have, if you don't feel good physically and you're like. Something's off, like I don't, my stomach's off or like, you know, eh eh, it's very obvious, like you can feel. Physical things where you're like, ah, my shoulder, whatever. It's the same thing for mental health. If you feel like. Something's off, that's because there probably is. And I would say like, really be in tune with yourself and. And speak it out loud and don't just chalk it up to be like, I'm just having a, you know, an off day. Cuz like tho- that off day turns into two, turns into three, in these times, like, you know, everybody has an off day, then you recover. But if you're not recovering and you're like every day feeling like shit, like. I just feel off. And you have no clarity on like how to fix that. You definitely need to 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 step back and be like, okay, like maybe.
Is that a choice that you made, like, I mean. Or did it just happen? You're like, wait a minute.
No, it was, it was a a choice where like, I could see like, I'm, I'm just not good. Like I'm just not doing well at all. And I was like, I don't know if it, do I need meds, do I need to ch- like what needs to happen? For me, I'm not a big, I'm not a big med guy, you know, like I don't, that works for some people, you know, whatever. But I'm more of the holistic kinda thing. And I, and I, we, you know, we talked to the therapist and I'd be, you know, every week we'd kinda talk about about bullshit, right? I'd be like, well, this, that, that. And then it was, finally, I was like, wait a minute, it's none of those things, like, it's not my relationships, it's not my jobs. It's not like, it's me, like I'm not good. And like the reason all of these things. Are presenting the way they're presenting is because like of me, I'm the problem. And so I think, I think the advice is be very, very self-aware. And if you're not good. Then you need to like, say that to yourself and then s- tell somebody else like, you know. I'm a little, I'm not good, like, so like what? You know, go get advi- do something, do something to to change the pattern of being not good. And that, and maybe it's one thing, maybe it's just like, I'm gonna change just one little thing to see if that helps and then see if it helps. Cuz I'll tell you, it's a crippling, anxiety and depression are are a crippling uh, thing for some people. And if you don't have, um, if you don't have relationships or somebody to be like, is this normal? Like you would go to the doctor if something hurt for a long period of time. And if you're emotionally hurting for a long period of time and you don't have any explanation for it, you gotta do something to like. Get to the, get to the bottom, don't just let it go by. Don't just be like, nah, it's enough. I just feel shitty, like. Talk to somebody. That would be my advice.
Great chat, fellas. So now's the time when we cheers to life, love, lots of laughter. And old school board games, especially Hungry Hungry Hippo.
Get it, get that marble.
Great fucking game, by the way.
Al still plays every night at two AM. By himself. They came out with it again. Like they just came out with a newer one.
That's that's nostalgia, they're they're doing so much nostalgia comeback from everything from like food, like brands. Candy brands are coming back, board games are coming back, video games are coming back.
The human version of it, you see that like. With the old people. And you could like, you go out and you like grab everything, somebody's got your ankles, pulling you back on the dolly.
It's fantastic.